Let's pray. Father, Lord, we thank you for this day of life. Oh, we thank you for the many blessings that you continually bless us with. We just continue to pray for this community and the people thereof, the people that are sick or hurting in some way, Lord. I pray it's be your will to touch each and every knee. I pray for each and every individual here tonight. If you watch our work, if you care for us, you know you will. Lord, we thank you for loving us. And we ask you to be with us during this meeting. Ask forgiveness of our sins. Amen.
Let's lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome our vote to 2019 Windfield City Council meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of the meeting from November 5th, 2019. Meeting, is anybody any comfortable with that question? How come it's not written? If not, I need to ask for a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, all in favor? The next item on the agenda is the meeting date. The council meeting meeting date changed to Tuesday, December 3rd to Monday, the 2nd at 5:15. Due to having to be absent during that day, I need to ask if the council is okay with me to ask for a motion to change that date from the 3rd to the 2nd at 5:15. Do you make motions, second? All in favor? You got your recorder? You got a recorder? You don't give me away, but you got a recorder. All right, the next item on the agenda is the pending resolution number 1250 for the Windfield volleyball team. Let me read this resolution to you here in the city of Windfield. Whereas the 2019 Windfield Park and Recreation League team have distinguished themselves in their support and have brought honor and recognition to the city of Windfield. Whereas the 2019 volleyball team members under the direction of head coach Shay Griffin and assistant coach Trey Griffin have won Alabama Recreation Park Association State Volleyball Championship. And whereas the members of the 2019 Windfield Park Recreation Volleyball Team members are J.C. Griffin, Peyton Burrows, Molly Kate at Elkins, Ryle Nodelle, Alyssa Hollensworth, Kendall Norris, and Abby Champ. And whereas the current team won the 2019 ARPA State Volleyball Championship in said division. And whereas the 2019 Windfield Park Recreation Volleyball Teams accomplishments and contributions to the city of Windfield and to residents and citizens of the city of Windfield have been numerous in addition to those besides your end. For this city and its residents shall be eternally grateful. And therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the city council in the city of Windfield, Alabama, that this resolution be adopted with president and coach Shay Griffin and assistant coach Trey Griffin in the 2019 Windfield Park Recreation Volleyball Team officially commending the 2019 team members for their leadership and for their many accomplishments and contributions they have made to the city of Windfield during their season with Windfield Park Recreation. I need to ask Shay and Trey to come up here and accept this motion. First, I need probably ask the council to make a motion. And second, to accept it. All in favor? Come up here and get invited to the council. Well, I'll tell you what might be best is let them get the girls come up here and talk. Y'all sure will.
I can't see them. I can't see them.
Two years in a row? One, two, three. One more. Good job, girls.
Let's carry this out.
Yeah, I turned it down.
I wonder why it's so much faster than our lights.
I want to move to 5:15. Christopher's at 6:00. Is it 6:00?
6:30.
6:30. Christopher did sign out and moved that council meeting. We're going to try to get more again. Around Christmas time, it's hard to get schedules to work out. It's just like trying to get family pay. You can't do it, or somebody will be somewhere else. The next item on the agenda is Mr. Bob Hinder's here on the Northwest, on behalf of Northwest Medical Center. He kind of wanted to come by and give the council an update of what's going on at the hospital.
Hard to compete with that volleyball team. Last meeting, I was here. I failed to give people an opportunity to ask questions following my remarks. Today, I welcome your questions you might have. What I wanted to do is to go through, I can pass this out too before I begin. I worked up a, you can just pass this one down. I'll go over this with you rather quickly. It's a listing of progress that we've made. And I'll take questions after that. So we haven't turned a corner yet. Don't see any light at the end of the tunnel yet. But we are making progress in every way possible, I believe. So here we go. Employee morale has improved and remains positive. Patient satisfaction survey scores continue to improve. Patient complaints have dramatically decreased while positive comments are frequent. Our financial statements and status continues to improve from a deficit position. Our image and involvement in the community is reflecting positive change. The hospital's physical appearance and outside curb appeal is improving. Our marketing and public relations efforts have accelerated and appear positive in changing patient perception and admissions. The weakest area in our operation, the executive management team, the emergency department, hospitalists, wellness center, dietary department, and community perception are all on the mend and in some cases are becoming our strengths. We started up our own business office in November and expect significant savings, about $300-plus thousand a year, as well as improving our collections upfront. The emergency department is now staffed with five ER physicians, all under hospital contract and all competent. This has resulted in satisfied patients and an annual savings of $300 and some thousand by eliminating rental doctors, the called locums. But we've had to bring in doctors prior to my coming here. And sometimes you have losers in that group. And we had plenty of them. Somehow, we have five good doctors under contract. And we should, that's why we're experiencing many lesser complaints in that ER. In fact, I believe the ER will become our strength. The Wellness Center has increased membership, 75 new members in the last three months by providing new equipment, new programming, and physical renovation. Affiliation valued with St. Vincent's Ascension Health System. January 8th, we're starting up two new services, a sleep lab and pulmonologist clinic. We'll have three pulmonologists coming out from St. Vincent's to run the sleep lab and also to run a clinic here. October 16th, Dr. Rothmitch, an orthopedic surgeon from Andrew's Group, started seeing patients at our specialty clinic. St. Vincent's Foundation is assisting us in starting up our own hospital foundation. St. Vincent's contract service, the Touch Point, will be managing our dietary department. The only thing I would add to this that isn't on that listing, our patient population has not shown measurable improvement. We are, I wouldn't say flatlined, but we're not making the kind of gains in patient care, patient population, patient admissions that I hoped we would. And what I could say about that is when a hospital loses the trust of the community, it's like marriage. If you lose the trust of your mate, it takes a lot of effort to bring that trust back. So that's the way with any organization. When you lose the trust, Dr. Phil says it takes thousands of adderworks to make up for it. And I believe that's what's happening. The other thing that concerns me is, I don't know for sure, but I would guess based on, we used to see about 200 inpatients a day, a month. We're now seeing about 100. And that's been declining over the past five years. So I believe, in addition to what I've said about perception, I believe there's outmigration, meaning patients are leaving this area to go perhaps over to your hospital. So as long as we have outmigration, we're going to struggle. We're not seeing a great increase in outpatient care. A little bit, we're seeing a little bit of improvement in surgery, but not much. So it concerns me a great deal. That's why we're trying to do everything we can to bring about excellent care in that hospital, to get patients leaving there saying good things about us. And we're trying to market that as well, as aggressively as we can, trying to change the perception of the community. The best you can do for us is to speak well of the hospital and encourage your family and friends to use us when it's appropriate. If you need the expertise of a bigger hospital, that's a different story. But we have, I can tell you, we have good medical people. We have good nurses. We have excellent clinical services. The care people receive at that hospital is about as good as you're going to get in a rural hospital and compared to any other hospital. If there's anybody that has negative experience that you know about it, you come and let me know immediately. And we'll look into it, and I'll give you feedback, and I'll give that person feedback about what we found out and what we're going to do about it. So we're trying to run down every patient complaint. And we're seeing those complaints diminish quite a bit. Most of the complaints were coming out of the ER before I got here. An ER hurtus, and one hurtus was not the nurses, but the doctors that were coming in from out of town that we didn't know much about. We're now, we have now five really good doctors. And so the care in that ER is really good. And it will be better even in the future. From a financial point of view, we're struggling. Until we get that census moving in the right direction, we'll continue to struggle. We inherited a lot of debt back in May of 2018. The hospital in 2018 had a final debt, a deficit budget of $4 million deficit. So we have cut that deficit down to about $1.5 million this year. So that's the good news, but $1.5 million is a way to go. That's not great. We've got to get that down. And I've got to plan a budget for 2020, starting in January. We're in a calendar year. So I've got to plan a budget in a month. It's going to subtract that point of debt in that budget. We've got to make some tough decisions and probably cut some services that we're not anxious to cut, but we may have to. So let me give you another example of what we've done financially. These were, we inherited a tremendous amount of debt. These were aging accounts payable. When we took over this in May 31, 2018, Kura, the former owner, had a bad debt of over $3.2 million. That's what we inherited, $3.2 million. During the time that we've been running this budget, we're now down to $1 million. So we've cut, we've paid a lot of bills, past bills. We're staying current with our bills. And we're making payroll most of the time. So it is a real challenge. Not only a challenge for this hospital, it's a challenge for every rural hospital in Alabama. One just closed this week. So it is not easy, under the best of circumstances, even if you're so well managed, there's not a secretary in that hospital there. Not one. Every one of us is doing their own work. Every manager in that place has no support except themselves. Most of our managers are doing multiple things. They're not only running a department, they're doing two or three other things in addition. We cannot cut that staff any further down. So even if you're that well managed, it's hard to make a success of a rural hospital. The reason Hamilton exists, the reason Fayette exists is because they're both supported by two bigger hospitals. We're standing alone. We're trying to make it on our own. So that's kind of where we're at at this point. We're making progress in all these areas that I've identified. But until we get a better census, better volume, we're going to continue to struggle financially. So that's the report today. Any questions?
Have we repurchased the doctor's offices in those buildings that he's owned?
We own everything on that campus.
Okay, good.
That's the other thing. Every one of our roofs, all our buildings here, I mean even the new hospital is 20-some years old. All our roofs are leaking water when it rains. There's a doctor that sits in his office. Water's dripping down on his desk when it rains. So just one roof. We've got to bid for one roof in a physician office building. $130-some thousand. And every one of our roofs is needing repair. So when I tell you it's not an easy task to run a hospital and make it today in a rural hospital, Blue Cross just squeezes you down. And we're going to have to renegotiate a contract with Blue Cross. We hope we get a better contract. We're working on that. But we have great staff. We have very loyal people. And we're making good progress every day. But we need your help, and you can help us. Any other questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. I've been in the hospital twice in the last three months. Had surgery there. Dr. Walker took off another toe. And I had nothing but great things to say about everybody that worked there, everybody I had any contact with.
We appreciate that. We talk to patients there every day. And when, most of them, I'm talking more about the inpatients now. But if you went up on that floor and talked to the inpatients, I would say that 10 out of 10, and if we get any complacent, might be 1 out of 20. We fix it right away when we get that. But we ask those patients, they praise us. And the families praise us. And we say to them before they leave here, when you go out into the community, you tell your family and friends that you're getting the best of care here. That's the kind of thing we need more out of. We need people that leave here, leave the hospital, and are real positive. When you get one negative, just one negative, when there's 200 people working in that hospital, there are thousands of opportunities, thousands, every day, to make a mistake, just passing medications. There are thousands of opportunities just to make one mistake passing medications. So we'll never clean up our act completely. We'll always have somebody that has not had what they want. A lot of patients that come through that ER, this is an example of what we're dealing with also. This is a day we call it self-pay, people that have no insurance. Alabama has a percentage of, 12% of our population in Alabama has no insurance. 8% nationally has no insurance. So we're 4% above the national average with people without insurance. Now, just to give you an idea of what we're dealing with, I asked our business office just this month. They said, give me 10 days of ER patients. We see about 1,000 ER patients a month, about 1,000. So in 10 days, we had 60 patients that had no insurance come through that ER. If you project that over a month, it's 180 patients. It's 18% of the patients that come in there have no insurance. And then on top of that, if a patient is very sick and requires inpatient care, we have to admit them to the inpatient unit. In this month, we just have one patient, one patient, $153,000 of free care, one patient. So it's a big challenge. We're working on it. I'm still optimistic. But we're going into a new budget year. And I'm planning to put a budget out there that I think I can balance the budget. But it's going to take some serious cuts, I'm afraid. Anything further?
We appreciate Bob for coming and giving us an update. Appreciate your work that you're doing to try to keep our hospital on track. You know, we definitely need it in the community for us, industry and different things. Appreciate the effort that you're putting forth to make it what it needs to be. And I can relate to you, of course, sitting on that board, all the stress and the struggle that you've got with it. A lot of people don't understand that when a hospital, the hospital down in Tor, like you said, a lot of it can be from a negative impact. One thing said, and it goes on Facebook, and it makes it spread, and it sounds like it's the terribest place on the earth. But even if it's the best place, if you don't collect what work you do, if you don't collect for it, you're not going to survive. You know, and not having, having that high of a percentage of no pay, no insurance, and usually with no insurance, it's a very slow pay if it is paid. And that makes it, I believe we'd be a lot better if we could collect every time that somebody comes in, we wouldn't be struggling years and months.
In fact, we've got our own business office now. We will do a much better job in collecting and maybe minimize self-pay as well. When we have a self, for example, the one that I told you about, the gentleman that, the patient that ran up the bill of over $100,000, we are trying to qualify, and we have qualified that patient for Medicaid. So our business office is looking at every option. If somebody doesn't have insurance, we're trying to find them some source of insurance.
But even at that, what's the percentage of that $100-and-sought-thousand dollars you're going to get?
About 18%. That's the other thing you need to understand. Even though you charge $100-and-sought-thousand, we get about 18% from Blue Cross.
I know my business couldn't make it if I collected that way. I don't think any other business in town can make it if they collected that way. You know, it's just, it's a bad situation, you know, if you can't get paid. So we appreciate Bob.
Sure. We're going to get there. We're going to get there.
Okay, I strongly believe we will. This community supports one another, and that community, I think, will come through for us in supporting this hospital. The next item on the agenda is resolution number 1251 of the Windfield Governor. Todd, you got that resolution?
No, I need to come back to that another night. I ain't got that completed yet. I've got to get with, I need to get with the body.
Okay, I'll type it to the next meeting.
The actual language would need to be included in the resolution how that reduces based on payments and things like that.
All right, next item on the agenda is just walked indoor C3 membership. Need to make a scene. You timed it just a little bit late.
All right.
I need to, I guess, ask the council the thoughts on renewing our membership with C3. This membership for 2020. We've done that, I think, for the last, since you've been, except one time, I think, for the last two years. You know, I need to, my recommendations were to stay with C3. We've included that in the budget, but I need that council's input on it. If you've got anything to say about it.
I agree, we need to do it again. But maybe you haven't lived up to your coming there three months to keeping this up to date.
All right.
You need to do that.
I'll get, Angie and I get on a calendar basis.
I'll get up, Angie and I get on a calendar basis. I will just say a few things. These are good times, the unemployment rate in the state was a record at three percent. November it went to two point eight and so did Marion County. It's probably record unemployment. I don't think that it can get much lower, even though you're seeing some people hiring retail restaurants for the holidays, it may possibly get lower. But that just means there's opportunities for people to move up the ladder in terms of earning potential job satisfaction, the fact that, you know, we do have people driving out of the counties to work, we hope that they'll have opportunity to come home. But we're promoting and talking to people, getting questions answered, making sure that folks know what you have to offer and you do have a lot to offer in Winfield. And I'm so proud to see the success of Tiffen here and, you know, you've got other companies been here for decades and it's, it's a good place, hope to live and do business. So I would hope that we can continue to be partners and we're really in a competition with everybody out there that wants similar things to us, but you do have an interstate here and now a park with some activity that's creating a little buzz, I think, in terms of people seeing progress and that just should lead to more progress. So we wanna be a part of that. Very competitive, I think you're listening, you know, two industries, you know, developing games competitive, the healthcare industry, very competitive. So I think the advantage here is that we are pulling together, creating a bigger opportunity in terms of people looking at this area to say that we've got multiple communities and sites, but Winfield's gonna be right up front of what you've been able to do in creating a product and then we can out promote that product. So I appreciate the partnership, hope you continue with us. Al Ilber is here with us, he's our chair this year. Wade Nixon, who's at Bevel, will be our chair in Marion County the coming year. We've been fortunate able to swap our chairs around in our three counties and we'll have our annual meeting here in Winfield in January. That'll be the third time we've done that. That'll be about a hundred and fifty people. We did plan for our speaker to be the head of the Mossa Tuiya operation in Huntsville and he told me just a couple of weeks ago, he didn't have any conflicts, he was just throwing us, set the best state in the way to anywhere. So we'll get to that in a minute.
Appreciate that. My recommendation, I need to ask for a motion to approve that renewal, see if you made a motion, let's just say that all in favor. Next item on agenda, has everybody had a chance to look over this weed miter ordinance draft? Todd, I think we've got probably about three, four weeks ago when you gave it to it. Has anybody got any questions or anything to take out of it or add to that weed miter Pretty much on course of what I think, how I feel like it needs to be. I need to, if everybody's okay with it, I need to ask for a motion to approve that weed miter ordinance, the changes that were made, pretty much, it's not the tall, two or three small changes I think made, different from what our original one was. Todd, you got them highlighted in yours, I didn't write my.
No, I don't have them. This really doesn't, the only thing this really changes is that it makes it a little bit easier.
To understand.
To understand and to get something accomplished. It really, it really streamlines the enforcement of this. It gets away from that old, that real archaic one that we had and streamlines it a lot. And so this is more in line with what other municipalities our size have. Like I said, I just think it's a little easier to understand and a little more streamlined.
Are we moving ahead on this condemnation? Are we moving, still moving ahead on this?
Yeah, this here's gonna help us be able to move forward. It's gonna clarify some things to be able to do that. We've got the abatement board in place. Once we pass this, once y'all approve this, changes in this ordinance, weed miter ordinance, I plan on getting with the abatement board and moving strong and heavy. We've got things in place to kinda back what we're doing.
Yep.
Second to approve, all in favor.
Okay, now we'll figure what we'll do is if the next council makes a vote, we'll pass it as a law. We'll give this action, repeal this, go ahead, fine.
The next item on agenda is the old business. Has any county member got any old business? If not, I got the garbage truck, what's that, the truck that we had at City Shop that we put on Gov deals and we had a local, one local bid and then we had a Gov deal bid. Well, the Gov deals, they backed out and didn't take it. So I need to know if you want to take the next, which was a local bid, or you want to put it back on Gov deals and lower the, lower the reserve on.
What's the difference?
About eight hundred dollar difference. You want to lower the, you want to set the reserve at a different amount. We had it set at eighteen hundred.
Two thousand.
Two thousand. The bid, the bid was around sixteen hundred. We had it set at two thousand. I need to know that if you want to set that reserve at a lower amount and put it back Did the guy that bid sixteen hundred never come and looked at it anyway, did he?
To my knowledge, he did not.
He was buying, selling it back down.
Drop the tight eighteen hundred? You want to put it tight eighteen hundred?
Drop it two hundred? Not my, whatever.
Well, they get the same, doesn't matter. How many beds do we have at seven one? Just one bed?
Local.
Just one bed?
Local.
On the internet, said that?
No, how many beds you had?
I didn't look at the bid history, I don't know.
I figure you had several to get it up to that amount. What was the starting bid?
Eight hundred.
You had, probably had several to get it to eight, to sixteen hundred.
I would take thousand, run it again. Leave my recommendation.
All right, leave it like it was and run it again. Anybody that got in, I need, I need to, I need to ask for, I go to the next item on agenda, I don't have any other business. I need to ask for a motion to approve pay the bill.
Motion.
Second, all in favor. I need to ask to go into a, take a session just for a few minutes to discuss a possible business venture proceeding. We may act on it, so if anybody would come back in and may ask for a minute to bend together to act on this. I need to ask for a motion to approve this, for just a few minutes, I'm trying to make it ten, fifteen minutes, 'cause I got another meeting at six thirty.
All right.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewsTV.